Twenty, two thousand twenty-two, I call to order the regular monthly meeting of the Board of Trustees. We actually just had our Years of Service Awards, and that's always a super special night for us. We want to thank everyone for their Lexington, too. So with that, I'll pass it to Ms. Branna for our invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Today, we welcome Sydney Evans, who's going to be doing our invocation, and Emily Kaiser, who's going to be doing our pledge of allegiance. Sydney is a senior at Airport High School, where she is ranked number five in the senior class and has a GPA of five point two-nine. She has been part of the early college program, taking AP classes, and is currently taking Health Science Three here at the Innovation Center. She's been a varsity cheerleader for six years, and she loves supporting her school. She is involved in the Senior Beta Club and is a member of the B-27 Club. Sydney is also a part of the student leadership team at Trinity Baptist Church and serves her community through that team. She works as a cheerleading coach at Silver Jack's Gym as well, and after graduating from Airport, she plans to attend USC to pursue an undergraduate degree in early childhood education. Dr. Cooper, write that down. And we got a job for you when you get out sweaty. And then get a graduate degree in speech-language pathology. Sydney wants to work in an elementary school as a speech therapist, and she has always wanted a career in helping children. We welcome you, Sydney. And before you go, I'm going to also introduce Emily Kaiser, who's doing our pledge of allegiance. Emily is a senior at Airport High School, where she has served in student government all four years of high school, serving as freshman class secretary, sophomore class president, student body vice president, and currently serving as president of the student body. She's a member of Beta Club, National Honor Society, and serves on the Casey Mayor's Task Force Committee. She has remained an honor student all four years of high school, taking AP classes such as AP Biology, and now will have a college credit in the Teacher Cadet Program. Her GPA is a four point three-eight-five, and she was in the top ten percent of her junior class and served as a junior marshal. After graduation, she plans to attend Midlands Tech for two years and then attend USC to receive a Bachelor's in Nursing so that she can become a Pediatrics Critical Care Nurse. So proud of both of you students, and welcome. We're going to start off with the invocation, followed by the pledge.
Thank you, ladies. All right, the next item on our agenda is the Consent Agenda, and with no objections, the Consent Agenda stands approved as presented. And we will now move to public participation, where we have Ms. Whitney Hendricks signed up to speak tonight. And let's see here. I'm just going to go over a few little things. We just asked that no profanity is used. We also asked that you do not use any staff or students' names. The Board will not give feedback per policy and will receive all comments as information only. So with that, we welcome you here tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board members, and Dr. Hafner. My name is Whitney Hendricks. I'm a graduate of Lexington Two, and my three children are currently enrolled in our district. Tonight, I would like to address the issue of social-emotional learning. Since doing my own research, I've learned that this is the second year SEL will be taught inside the classroom across the district, the third year at Busby. It's very concerning that this was not explicitly made known to parents with clear guidelines and expectations. In my opinion, if students are required to participate in any program at school, parents should be notified as to what concepts will be covered and how. When information like this is withheld from parents, it begs the question, what else might I not know? My husband has served on the School Improvement Council at Springdale Elementary for the past eight years. When he first heard the term SEL last year, it was brought up as one more three-letter acronym in the educational rhetoric. After discussing with my husband and other parents, who were also unaware of the implementation of this program, we took it upon ourselves to learn exactly what SEL is. We learned about the Castle Organization, the Second Steps Program, the Core Project, and the Committee for Children. Research on these woke organizations and programs introduced another set of red flags altogether. Until recently, these organizations have unapologetically boasted their liberal and woke mission to create social justice warriors. I'm highly concerned that our taxpayer dollars are being used to subscribe to and purchase materials from organizations such as these. Under the umbrella of SEL, teachers have an open door to introduce controversial ideas and politically charged topics, such as gender ideology, religion, sexual orientation, even critical race theory, or its tenants, if we don't want to label it as such. Now, certainly, not all teachers would broach these subjects with their students, but for those that would, what is stopping them? If these concerns weren't enough to consider reevaluating our need for the current SEL program in the classroom, perhaps the district report card that was released this week is: Not one school in Lexington Two received an excellent rating. The learning loss from COVID was a huge blow, and we continue to see the effects of that in student performance in core subjects. That said, do we really have the time and resources to continue to invest in the current SEL program at the expense of academic learning? The main function of the school is to prepare students for the workforce and/or college. Our focus must be on providing a competitive education for our students and families, and yet we continue to rank behind surrounding districts in areas of academic performance. We should be exploring other ways to meet any federal or state requirements in regard to soft skills that don't detract from our chief responsibility. In my view, if we, as a district, commit to shifting our focus back to academics, I believe we can level the playing field for our graduates. To be clear, I understand that the social and emotional well-being of our student body is an important consideration. However, it is secondary to the primary function of the school system. Quality educators will naturally teach many of the soft skills addressed in SEL, such as conflict resolution, time management, and organization, without being required to do so. Do we really need to dictate the specifics and give our teachers yet another set of standards to teach and track? Moreover, can we, as a district, ethically ask our teachers to step into the parent's role as a moral authority and guide? My heart breaks for children whose parents have neglected these responsibilities. But from my perspective, this is where our invaluable guidance department steps in for those on the fringe, not the masses in the classroom. And frankly, those students would benefit most from a dedicated guidance professional more than a teacher whose attention is divided between twenty-plus students and their academic needs. Elected Board members, I urge you to give careful consideration to our need for a program such as this and to draw clear lines that cannot be crossed in our classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hendricks. All right, so that concludes public participation. So we will now move to honors and accomplishments of students and staff. Dr. Hafner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In honors and accomplishments tonight, we have Springdale Principal Annette Ariel, who is going to introduce veteran educator Stacy Wiley, who was recently named a WLTX Teacher of the Week.
Good evening, Dr. Hafner, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm very excited to get to present Ms. Wiley tonight. She has with her one of her sweet students, Ms. Courtney. Ms. Courtney's grandfather was the recommendation that won Ms. Wiley the Attention of WLTX Teacher of the Week. We were so excited when they called us. They said that this is the first time in two years that they've been able to recognize a teacher and come into the school again due to COVID. They said they got lots of recommendations from Lexington Two as a whole and a lot from Springdale, and Ms. Wiley was fortunate enough to get that recognition. So we are super excited to have her at Springdale. She has been teaching for twenty-one years in Lexington Two, for nineteen years and twelve years at Springdale, and she plans on staying there at least twelve years more, just in case you were wondering.
Next, Brooklyn Casey High School's Choral Director and Piano Instructor Wendy Humphreys will introduce two students who recently attended a USC Leadership Event. Come on up.
Good evening, Madam Chairman. I remember you from former. She'll always be thirteen to me because I taught her. I'm very privileged tonight to introduce Calvin Valentine, who is a sophomore in our honors choir, and Ella Everett, who is a senior in our honors choir. And they just recently have signed, they participated at UFSC Choral Department, and it was a choral leadership department. And so they were learning skills of conducting. They were learning skills of how to have sections, sectionals, and learn how to teach fellow students, how to do warm-ups. And they spent an entire Saturday with Dr. Alicia Walker and Dr. Jabari Glass. So I'm very excited to, they're getting recognized for that. They also, we just spent the weekend together, this past weekend, up at Southern Wesleyan University. They auditioned and sent in recorded auditions May of last year, and they were both selected to the South Carolina American Choral Directors Association Honor Choir Weekend. And Calvin was very amazed that he got to sing with about two hundred other gentlemen in a male chorus for the weekend, and Ella was also with about two hundred other females. And I would like to take a moment just to say thank you to our board, who have been very patient and diligent. My sticky note, we appreciate you being patient with COVID, and this year, twenty-twenty-three, is our third attempt to perform at Pearl Harbor. And so we have been busy fundraising. We thank you for approving that every time since they did receive the invitation. COVID hit, the mayor asked us not to come last year. So we will be traveling February the eighth through the thirteenth to represent Lexington District Two. They'll have a masterclass at the University of Hawaii with their Choral Director. They'll perform at the USS Missouri Monument. And there's also another possibility of performing at another flag folding ceremony. And then, needless to say, they will get to do some sightseeing. We have nineteen students going, and we're very excited about that. But thank you for your continued support of the arts.
If you need any chaperones, let us know. And finally, our K-12 math coordinator, Jennifer Wise, is going to introduce a Busby student who has been recognized by Math Nation. Ms. Wise?
Going to give a little background information on the award that we were able to present to Mica yesterday. So, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Hafner, I'm absolutely delighted to celebrate Mica Simmons and his teacher, Megan Butcher, from Busby Creative Arts Academy for his recognition for a warning, excuse me, earning the highest number of Karma Points in the program for the entire state of South Carolina. That does include middle and high school students throughout the state. So a little background on Karma Points is, Math Nation's philosophy is the greatest way to show that you've mastered that content is to be able to teach it to others. So there's an algebra wall where students can post questions that they have, and then students can come and share their responses, and they can earn points for doing a great job assisting others. They don't get points if they tell the answer. It has to be the same prompt that a teacher would give in a classroom. And there are study experts who are current and former algebra teachers themselves that monitor the board to ensure that the content being posted is appropriate and accurate. And Mica, for the month of September, had the most comments that awarded, that were awarded points to receive the award of an iPad Mini yesterday. So Math Nation came in, we were, excuse me, very excited, and I'm just delighted to be able to share this with you this evening. And then also for Ms. Butcher, who has done a phenomenal job in encouraging her students. I know several of you have been with us when we've celebrated these awards. We've had students from Brooklyn Casey and Airport as well, winning awards throughout. So, great program. We're appreciative to be a part of it, and congratulations to Mica.
Oh, yes, excuse me. And also, I did want to point out that our October issue of honors and accomplishments is posted on our district website and will be shared out through social media and Bright Arrow. So please be sure to take a look at that.
Thank you, Dr. Hafner. And we will go straight to the superintendent's update, which is the superintendent's goal. So right back at you.
Very good. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I believe an important part of leadership is establishing goals and participating in continuous reflection of one's progress towards those goals. And tonight, I would like to share my goals with you and our stakeholders so that I may follow up at the conclusion of each year with action steps toward the desired progress and measured outcomes. So at this point in time, I will shift to presentation. Thank you, Bernie. Appreciate that. As I thought of sharing my goals with you and our Board of Trustees for the immediate year and ultimately the next three years, I thought it most appropriate to start with our strategic plan priorities. You all may be aware that we have a shortened version that is a one-pager and much easier to follow, so that is where I built my goals. The first page of that document offers a reminder of our district mission. We are Lexington Two, partnering with our community to foster innovative educational opportunities in the classroom and beyond to ensure richly diverse students achieve at their highest potential. Followed by our vision as champions for children, Lexington Two will be highly innovative and excel in preparing all students for continuous learning and career success. And finally, our beliefs, that I will not read in their totality, but they revolve around the ideas that we put students first. We are stronger together. The use of technology can enhance learning. Embracing diversity, providing engaging instruction, and strengthening partnerships within our community. Next slide. Thank you, sir. As a reminder, the first priority of our strategic plan is to excel academically. We will provide a guaranteed and viable curriculum that results in high-quality classroom instruction. Teachers engaging in professional learning communities will monitor student progress toward proficiency and collaboratively develop opportunities to extend all students' learning. Accelerated learning opportunities through the Lexington Two Launch Program and an emphasis on supporting our multilingual learners will enhance students' growth in the classroom. So as that is our priority strategic goal, I have crafted my goals for this priority as follows. Goal number one, to increase the percentage of students showing growth in math and ELA as indicated on state assessments. Goal number two, to increase the percentage of students who are meeting growth targets with the appropriate skills for success at their grade level. And the challenges that we face in this arena is that about sixty-one percent of students in grades three through five are not currently on grade level in math, and fifty-nine percent not on grade level in ELA. Currently, about seventy-six percent of students in grades six through eight are not on grade level in math, and seventy percent are not on grade level in ELA. So we have some things to focus on. Among many things, the focus area will be to track how each school is monitoring and instructionally responding to individual student progress through the Professional Learning Community Achievement Team process. This may occur through a variety of ways, to include but not limited to our monthly principal meetings, instructional meetings, or onsite observations. Our second priority in Lexington Two Strategic Plan pertains to supporting students. We will continue to implement systems of support to ensure students have the tools, resources, and services needed to succeed. School teams comprised of a variety of professionals will regularly meet and monitor academic performance, student, excuse me, school attendance, and behavioral data to individualize plans for students needing additional support and recognize those who are succeeding. I have established my goals for priority two to reflect the following. Goal number one, implement a successful, multi-tiered system of support across all schools, resulting in improved student attendance, behavior management, and academic support. And two, increase safety and security vigilance through effective protocols and practices. The challenges that we face with these goals are that over the last two years, our chronic absenteeism rate for students increased to twenty-one point five percent. And according to the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two Report Card, forty-nine students overall were classified as expelled last year. As in an effort to combat this, I will monitor the system of tracking students through the multi-tiered system of support, especially where student attendance is concerned. In addition, we have been and will continue to increase efforts to update safety and crisis management plans, as well as procedures regarding safety. Thank you, Bernie. Priority number three addresses preparing graduates. We will raise the district's graduation rate through consistent monitoring of students' classroom performance, daily attendance, and progression towards graduation requirements. Structured academic interventions will provide an added layer of support for students needing extra time and instruction to learn course content. Through strategic scheduling, expanding course offerings, and providing exposure to college and career opportunities, students will graduate prepared for their career, the military, or college. So as a result, I have drafted my first goal to increase the district's percentage of students who graduate college or career-ready, as identified on the district's report card. My second goal is to increase the district's graduation rate, as identified on the district's report card. The challenges that we face, according to the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two Report Card, is that only twenty point nine percent of our students scored ready for college, and forty-six percent of our students scored as career-ready. In addition, the twenty-twenty-two on-time graduation rate for our district was seventy-nine point five. As a focus area, I will work to implement an efficient way to track, to identify and track students' academic progress and those who take courses that directly impact their status as college and/or career-ready. Priority four pertains to recruiting and retaining employees. We will combat continued hiring challenges by recruiting candidates from around the country. Incentives such as signing bonuses and employee assistance program and assisting with teachers with obtaining needed certifications will help draw talent to Lexington Two. Once hired, we will use mentoring models, cohort learning opportunities for first and second-year teachers, and employee recognition programs and our Professional Learning Communities framework to support and retain high-quality employees. My goal for this priority is pretty straightforward, to increase efforts to recruit teachers and support staff while expanding strategies to attack staffing shortages. The challenges we face in regards to recruiting and retaining are straightforward as well. The number of vacancies across positions is greater than the number of qualified candidates accepting those positions. The number of individuals entering the field of education has decreased over the last few years. Therefore, my areas of focus will be to actively promote awareness for Lexington Two graduates to become Lexington Two employees and increase pathways to grow and promote our current employees. In addition, we will continue to evaluate and implement innovative marketing strategies to recruit and retain teachers in Lexington Two. Priority number five pertains to engaging our communities. We will increase engagement opportunities for our school communities who continue to support us through the challenges of the pandemic. By providing volunteer opportunities and welcoming schools, creating stakeholder advisory groups at the school and district levels, maintaining open and direct lines of communication, and carrying out a marketing plan, the communities we serve will be able to contribute to the great things happening inside our buildings by understanding our goals and expectations. So in an effort to support this strategic priority, my first goal is to ensure stakeholders have knowledge of district information pertaining to various aspects of the district operation through targeted marketing dependent upon the stakeholder and their involvement in our district. Goal number two is to facilitate the development of a marketing plan to increase public awareness regarding the opportunities available to students in Lexington Two. Our challenge is simply that there are a multitude of information sources available to our stakeholders, and this can be overwhelming. So knowing this, my focus areas are identifying effective avenues and content to engage our diverse community audiences. Also, identify and utilize a marketing plan to educate and inform the public beyond the walls of our district. Our last district priority, number six, is centered around sustaining learning environments. We will continue to provide state-of-the-art facilities, including a brand-new Performing Arts Center that provides students and staff with safe, flexible, and conducive learning environments. Technology, transportation, and facilities will continue to be upgraded to meet expanding needs. My goal to meet this priority is to simply use resources judiciously to address the needs of the facilities and operation of the district to ensure student learning environments are safe, resource-rich, and supportive of individual student needs. Our challenge with this is our ability to combat inflation and economic factors while adhering to state mandates, such as salary mandates or retirement increases, things of that nature. As such, my focus areas will be to budget conservatively and efficiently to continue to meet students' evolving and diverse needs. to meet students' evolving and diverse needs. In addition, monitor maintenance and facilities plans in an effort to stay on track for capital improvements. While my goals do not address every component of each priority, it is a starting point with a heavy lift. My overarching goal is to be able to show you progress towards these goals in each of the years ahead. So I thank you for your attention as I talk through these, and I hope that you can also see a productive system where we continue to work together toward continuous improvement. And I will be happy to entertain any questions at this time.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Hafner. Any questions? Everybody awake?
I don't think that was me. Yeah, I do. Fantastic goals. Thank you for doing those. They're very comprehensive and strategic, and I think that's what's necessary. I have three quick questions. The first one, priority two, MTSS. Where do you feel like we are as a district right now with MTSS overall?
Yes, sir. I know that last year throughout the course of the year, the instruction team worked with our principals to develop procedures to address the three prongs of the MTSS process with academics, behavior, and attendance, and the three tiers of instruction that go on in the classroom and supports and interventions for the students. The focus at this point is really about the fidelity of implementation and just making sure that we have systems of checks and balances to support our students and address interventions as needed.
Perfect. Thank you. With priority five, which was engaging communities, one of the things, I know that it's not fully on you, but as a recommendation, the state law has spoken of, and they didn't do it this session, but having all meetings on video and all meetings being in a pretty public spot. So part of that goal, it would be worth noting or talking about, making sure that we get ahead of that. I know that's half policy that we could write that, but if you end up feeling that, it would be positive and recommend in something of that, I think that's something worth talking about. And then lastly, priority number four, which I think was great, your goal, the priority is recruiting and retention, but the priority, the goals are kind of based around the recruitment side? And I think when we see later in the HR about how many people left to go to another district, I think there's just as much of a goal for us to, and again, these are your goals, so I don't want to step on your goals, but making sure that we're keeping just as much of attention and priority to retention. I didn't mean to say attention to retention, but it sounds good, I guess. And then what kind of ideas to that point do you have that differentiates us from the five other districts that we have in the Midlands?
Well, we are always working on retention. That's kind of an ongoing undercurrent. That is also part of the goals in our human resources department, and we are really working to think outside the box, and there are some things that are in the works that I don't want to give away to our neighbors at this point, but we always want to value the staffing that we have and make sure that we're taking care of them and trying to meet their needs.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions? That's great. Thank you, Dr. Hafner.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. So we will now move to finance, and we will start with our monthly financial reports, and Mr. Crocker.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Hafner, and members of the board. You will find the monthly reports for September, the first being the revenues, and we're trending within 1% of where we were last year. And the same with our expenditures, we're then about a half of a percent. So everything is normal. Our third one is people activity funds. And lastly is our capital project commitments, and I did change the layout up a little bit so it makes more sense as far as where we are with our expenditures and our GMP. And I'll be happy to answer any questions the board has.
Any questions on the monthly financial report? All right. Without objection, the monthly financial reports are accepted as presented. So we will now move to the federal funds report.
As recommended by a few of the board members, there is a layout change on this one as well that shows our budgets and our year-to-date expenditures to show if there are any leftover funds that are not committed. And so far to date in this fiscal year, we've spent just under $1 million. And I'll be happy to answer any questions the board has.
Very good. So we can move to the fiscal year '21-'22 procurement AUP report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We did not have any but one finding in our report, and it was a procedural one where we, after the procurement code was updated, we did not update our P-card manual to reflect our new single transaction limits. They were updated in all of our systems. It was just not updated in the manual. And during that time, we were actually in the process of updating it, and as of July 1st, it is in effect with those changes, so.
Okay. Very good. Thank you for the clarification there.
Madam Chair, thanks for that clarification, and I meant to ask you earlier on that one. With the 5K one-time purchase, is that a daily or an individual purchase?
Technically both. It's a single transaction limit and a daily limit on those cards.
All right. And next up is our '21-'22 support organization AUP report.
You will see what the procedures were for our support organizations and the findings related to each, and I'll be happy to answer any questions the board has in this report.
Any questions? Ms. Kessel?
On the minority business enterprise utilization, MBE, is there a reason that that, for that to occur?
As far as us not meeting it?
Yes.
It was based on how the calculation was made previously, which is why we updated the calculation based on our new procurement code earlier. And so going forward, it'll be a lot more consistent as far as us meeting it or not and also being able to calculate it.
Good, because it doesn't look, it doesn't reflect well.
It varies drastically from year to year to where we could meet it one year and then on another, it's drastically lower like this one.
Okay. On the findings of the MCC, the merchandise category, are we there that, do I need to bring that up now, or can I ask my question about that now?
On which one?
It's on the next page. It has to do with the increase in the single transaction limit.
Yes, ma'am. That was what I mentioned previously as far as the finding.
That's why I want to come back to it. Do we need to make a motion to increase that to make sure that it is a motion?
It's an internal procedure and control.
Okay, so there's no problem about that at all. It can increase without question?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kessler.
Travis?
Yes, sir.
With the organizations, is there still a, at the beginning of the year, the organizations meet with you or someone from your department to go over the procedures, their record-keeping?
And we send out documentation every year, and also I'll let the support orgs and the principals know that if they have any questions, we're here to help at any time and to do what we can.
Okay. I just noticed with the reconciliations, I just want to make sure that that was still taken.
It's the same findings year after year on this one.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Summers. Mr. Bray?
Thank you, Travis. Back to the procurement, another audit, another audit with no major findings. It seems like that's the trend, so congrats to you and the whole team. But for the support org audit, to what Bud was saying about reconciliations, and then I went back and looked at the two prior years, it seems pretty alarming. I think a lot of people see the amount of money that goes through those and the amount of findings where there's no receipts for reconciliation. You run a pretty big organization, and I'm assuming you all have no reconciliation issues, and then these smaller ones have a lot of them. So is there something, it seemed like your answer to Bud was that there wasn't too much you could do outside of educate. So then that, I guess is my question to you, Dr. Hafner, is this where we need to firm up a policy to put teeth to these things?
Mr. Bray, if you recall, we made the same request last year repeatedly and the year before that. So this is actually three years in a row that we have stressed that question, and we were told that we'd be taking care of it and we wouldn't be seeing these problems again, and this is the third straight year we've done this.
So from what I saw, it seems to me like maybe that's a time for us to hop in with policy and put teeth to it, because if it's just the education thing, we can only educate so much? I don't know. That's my question for you, ma'am.
Is this in reference to our boosters that are independent from our organization?
Yes, ma'am.
So do you have any, and you don't need the recommendation now, but I think it would be hoove us to not sit here for another year and have the same conversation, but between now and then, look at policy that we can do to either put some type of penalty in place or put a hold in place. I mean, if we're still responsible for them, even though they're outside of us, and our organization is running, not flawless, but pretty flawless when it comes to findings and reconciliation, but our little sub-tier organizations are obviously not, I feel that that's something that we need to address as a board and policy and be able to put a hold on that.
If you recall, we were given an update on that, those leaders in those or representative from those organizations were brought in and went through a little training session. So just for information, if you recall that.
Saying that, you kind of mean that we've done the education, so now it's time to do the policy. I agree. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Very good. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Crocker.
Thank you.
All right. So Ms. Brannum?
Clarify. I know you're making yourself available for questions and answers and all of that, but I think I want to follow up with Mr. Summers' question. Are we still requiring all, at least one person from each of the organizations to come physically into our office, meet with you, and actually go through the procedures?
Yes, ma'am. It's in board policy that we have to.
And we're still doing that?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you. All right. We will move to item eight, which is human resources, and we'll have our annual report to the board. Dr. Cooper?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Hafner. Tonight, we do have our annual staffing report. I'm going to ask Kevin Smoke to come to the podium today. Tonight, we're going to present this standard report to you together. This report has been presented to the school board for as long as I've been here, and that's 15 years, so I don't know what happened before that. But the intent was to show the primary trends in hiring on one side of this report and then retention on the other side. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kevin, please.
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Hafner. This is our annual staffing report for this school year, and you can see in the first section, this is as of August 31st, 2022, and it's the certified staff, new hires, and you can see that we had a total of 150 new hires as of August 31st. The second section is talking about the overall certified teaching demographics by new hire, and we broke it up. You can see that the first section indicates we have 65 induction teachers, and then we break it up by education level, average years, and then at the bottom, we've added a new component talking about the number of teachers through various alternative certification programs such as PACE, American Board, Teachers of Tomorrow, Teach for America. We have a total of 16 teachers currently in the alternative certification program. Our third section, it has to do with teachers who qualified for our stipend, more specifically the $2,500 signing bonus, and we had 65 teachers qualify for the stipend for this year. On page two, our next section has to do with the administrative new hires, and this is as of June 30th, 2022, and we have a total of five new administrative hires. And then the support staff in the next section, a total of 103 support staff, and then we have a total new hires of 258, and that includes administrative, support staff, and certified employees. On page three, we have a certified transfer list, and the first page is sorted by school transfer, whether they're transferred to, and you can see a list of the certified employees who were transferred. And on the fourth page is the support staff transfers for '22-'23 school year.
Moving into page five, you're going to see a table broken down, B1, B2, B3, B4, which directly relates to our performance objectives outlined in the strategic plan for the department. So while I will not read it to you, you can see, and this is fiscal, July 1 through June 30th, because it coincides with the year to present this information rather than as of August 30th. So it coincides with our strategic plan. So you can see that B1 refers to teachers leaving the district for a teaching position at another district, and then the categories that are encapsulated there, private school, virtual school charter, school or other educational institution. And I'll just keep going since I started there. B2 indicates reasons for leaving to include personal, spouse transfer, marriage, moving, family responsibilities, career change or graduate school, followed by B3, and that would be termination, non-renewal, breach of contract or certification issues, and finally, retirement. The table just below are indicative of our administrators or other professional staff that have left. And you can see that C1A, the number of folks who left to take a position at another district for a lateral, or lateral move, the next line, leaving the district to take information at another district, followed by C2 where they might have accepted a principalship, then C3, pursuing advanced degree, personal, terminated, and then finally, retirement. Again, we present this report to you just for information, and so if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them at this time.
All right. Any questions for Dr. Cooper?
Yes, ma'am. And I know it's going to be simple, but I couldn't figure it out. On page three, where it has, I think it's three, maybe four, custodian position moving to a school assistant.
Yes, ma'am. You will recall that with the Bud Group contract, anyone that we had on staff as a custodian could no longer clean. So what we did was create by virtue of the needs in the school position called assistant, school assistant, and those particular individuals were assigned to a particular school to assist the principal in any way that they need without cleaning. That is what that reference is.
Okay. Thank you.
Does that make sense?
Might be a nice job.
Well, I can tell you that, especially at the high schools, I know that the positions are well embedded in safety and security measures and so forth. I can tell you that the principals are very appreciative of it, and I can tell you that we have provided some professional development for our staff at, you know, with regard to the things that they may be asked to do, which include monitoring a class, maybe not so much substituting, in addition to the other duties that are assigned. But we felt it was our obligation. This is a good match for our staff, and we owe that to them. Are there any other questions?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Bray?
Yes, ma'am. I have one comment, as we spoke about earlier, if we can just look at potential changes to the format, and then to, what was my question? Oh, another comment. So on page one, new hires, 65, right? Page five, B1 category up at the top, people, teachers who've left for another district, negative 67. We are net negative two, just if we retained all of our folks. Now, we'll never retain all of our folks, but those are just people who are leaving for another teaching spot. So this goes back, Dr. Hafner, to my point of really looking to retention, and I know we were looking at some things, but being outside of the box. You know, there's a lot of things, and maybe I won't mention them out here, but I would love to see us maybe stop hitting the sacred cows and really look to like true innovative things that we can do to set ourselves out from the other five or six districts in this area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hafner.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Yes. Thank you both. Appreciate that. All right. So we will move to instruction, and we'll start with item A, Cognia update. Dr. Brooks?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Hafner, as you know, we're in the middle of Cognia accreditation for this school year. So every month, I plan to give you an update, so I wanted to start tonight with providing more of an update and sort of the game plan of where we're headed over the next few months. First off, we have a Cognia coach, and that is Carmen Pewbanks. You can see that. Dr. Hafner, the executive team, as well as Dr. Burgraff and myself, met with her on September 29th. Told you that was coming up at the last board meeting. She shared with us what the timeline sort of needs to look like as well as an overview of the new process, because it is a new process that they're rolling out this year. So that meeting went well. The plan right now is for her to meet with me and other members every other week so that she can keep a pulse on exactly what's happening and help us through this process. We, hopefully, our families that are in the audience tonight as well as listening, saw our family surveys kickoff on October the 9th. That was Sunday. We sent those out. We asked for those to be completed, I think, last Friday. They're still out there. Our schools have been asked to continue to try and get those turned in. As of this afternoon, we're trying to hit 20% of our families to help us have a good... help us have a good representation so that we can make good decisions based off of those surveys. As of this afternoon, we're at 53%. Out of that 20%, we've had 886 surveys this afternoon when I looked. So if you haven't completed that survey, please do that for us, because it really does help us know how to better move forward and what kind of decisions we need to make. We started our student and teacher surveys this past Monday. We continue to have schools work on those. We're trying to get 80% of our staff members, as well as our students. Elementary school right now is at 83%. Middle and high school is at 70%. So hopefully, we'll meet that target. I know some schools are planning to do that tomorrow, as well as Monday. We'll be meeting on Tuesday as a team to start looking at those results and trying to sort through and start trying to identify some issues and start working toward game plans. So if you'll take care of that before Monday afternoon, that'll help us on Tuesday when we start doing that. As far as current work that is going on, October the 11th, the principals and executive team started trying to figure out what all data sources we have in the district that we need to pull and to use as part of our determining where we need to, where our strengths are really and where our weaknesses are, and then coming up with a game plan to be able to address those. This past Tuesday, the instructional team took all of that work, and we started trying to really drill down into, for example, if we listed student handbooks, might be something that we want to pull in. What about that student handbook do we need pieces of? Is it the attendance piece? Is it behavior? What is it that we need exactly? And then our game plan from last Tuesday to this coming Tuesday is to begin pulling that data so that our principals and instruction team have that data to start looking through. As far as our timeline and process, you'll see that this, there's a lot of work to do pretty quickly, and it's really in-depth work. The instruction team, there are four different characteristics that I shared with you last time, the culture of learning, leadership for learning, engagement of learning, and growth in learning. The instruction team, we have two co-leaders that's going to help us through that process. I listed those for you. On the 11th, we started identifying the data sources, and the stakeholder surveys that I just shared have gone out as well. And then also on Tuesday, the number four is when we started cleaning that data. So coming up on this coming Tuesday, the 25th, is when we will start looking at all of those pieces of data and trying to analyze them and synthesize it, try to figure out exactly what it's telling us. And then on November the 1st, we'll be continuing that process, and hopefully, we'll be able to wrap that up then. If not, we will add in an additional meeting. And then you can see, November the 9th, we will meet to begin trying to interpret those findings and develop a theory of action. That just simply means, what's the root cause of the issues that we're seeing and identifying? And then we'll finish that work, hopefully, on November the 15th. And at that point, we will ask principals to take all of that information back into the schools, to share it with their teachers and staff so that they can get feedback from them. And then you'll see in number 10, the principals will bring that internal stakeholder review and feedback back to the whole entire group on December the 6th. In the meanwhile, on the number nine, you'll see that the instruction team has three other analyses that we have to do. One is on student performance, one is on stakeholder feedback, and one is on learning environment observations. And so we'll be doing those analysis on that day, on the 29th, and then also sharing that information with our principals. On the, on number 11 here, you can see that then we have self-rating of all the standards. You'll remember, I shared those 30 standards with you. We have to go through, rate where we are, and list the evidence that we're going to provide to support our ratings that we're giving ourselves with that. And then number 12, you can see that in January, early January, we'll start asking and sharing with some of our parents, community members, all of the information and where we think we are and what we think the root causes are and what our plans are to address them, so that our community and families have an opportunity to provide us some feedback as well. And then you can see later in January, number 13, is we will have narratives that we'll have to write on those four characteristic areas that I talked about earlier. And all of this information has to be submitted online by February the 1st. At that point, we'll have two reviewers that begin the process of reviewing, and then they will be determining a date to come to the district to do an onsite visit. So that's sort of Cognia, where we are and all of the work that is before us to get done, but that's the game plan to get it all accomplished. And I'll be glad to answer any questions if you have any about Cognia accreditation.
All right, any questions? And that'll, like you said, that'll be a monthly update.
Yes, ma'am.
It'll be held here every month. Okay, great. All right. Very good. So we can move to the instructional update.
The next thing I wanted to share, the school report cards came out on Monday, and so I wanted to just provide you some updates and information and begin trying to answer any questions that you might have. I wanted to start off by reminding everyone that we really were very hopeful that last school year was going to be a quote "normal" year, but COVID quickly reminded us that that wasn't going to be the case. At the beginning of last school year, we still had lots of students that had to miss school and staff members who had to miss school because of COVID and the things that were still in place. And we also started dealing with teacher shortages in some of our classrooms. So that is how the year started. I am excited to say that even though we're not anywhere close to where we want to be, and I will be the first to absolutely admit that, because we want to be providing our community with the best students, most knowledgeable students that we can, and we have a ways to go with that. But in order to get there, you have to show growth. And so we did have growth in most of our areas, which is a step in the right direction. In fact, 50% of our elementary schools and our middle schools outperformed the state growth average. So I think our schools deserve some credit for that. Also, wanted to point out that the Lexington to Poverty Index rating is 74.9 as compared to the state, which is 60.6. That does not mean that our students aren't capable. It just means that we have to work harder to provide additional resources that they don't come to school with necessarily. Before I move into the report cards, I did want to celebrate, and will be hopefully providing these students' names, but we had five students in our schools who had maximum scores. They don't call them perfect scores. They call them maximum scores. You can see where those schools are and what grade level they are. And then we have three in SC Pass, which is our science classes. So you can see that where those students were, and then hopefully, we'll be providing those names. We haven't shared that with the school yet. Y'all are the first to see those numbers, but we'll be congratulating those students and those schools with that information, because that's quite an accomplishment. All right, so just an explanation of what you're looking at as we move forward. Green is good. Gold means that we're above the state average. So as we're moving through all these slides, green is good, means we got better, and then the gold means that we are above the state average. So we're looking at elementary, ELA, students who scored met and above, and you can see the 21 score, the 22 score, and then the difference. So you can see that in all of our elementary schools, except for one, our scores increased, the number of students that scored met and above increased. And where we didn't see the increase, we're still above the state average. So that is the positive news. On the right-hand side, you'll see, this is just trying to show you where we're trying to close the gap to the state average. And so you can see in 2021 where the difference was between the school and the state average, and then where it is from 22. So you can see that in our schools, that we closed the gap with Casey, Congaree, Riverbank, and Wood, and that Saluda River and Springdale still remain above that state average. Are there any questions as far as how this is laid out before I move forward? Okay. So this is met, uh, math, met and above students. So you can see here that Congaree and Wood increased the percent of students met and above. Riverbank, Saluda River, and Springdale were above the state average. And then in closing the gap on the right-hand side, you can see that Congaree and Wood closed the gap toward the state average, and Riverbank, Saluda River, and Springdale maintained or expanded their gap over the state. In science, this is where the SC Pass comes in. You can see that Casey and Saluda River both increased their number of students in met and above. Springdale and Wood were above the state average. And then on the closing the gap side, the right side, Casey closed the gap toward the state average, and Springdale increased their gap above the state average. And then you can see what the differences were in the other schools with science. And that was just fourth grade. With our ELL proficiency growth, as a reminder, these are our MLL students, our ESOL students. They have five years to become English proficient. And so this is about tracking their growth toward meeting that five-year goal. So you can see that all of our elementary schools increased their ELL proficiency growth, and Congaree and Wood were above the state average in this category. And you can also see that Springdale didn't have enough students to have a subgroup in 21, but they did in 22. So I wanted to make sure you understood what that zero was about. Moving to middle school, it wasn't as good of information in middle school, but you can see as far as ELA, this is met and above. So there was an overall decrease in the number of students scoring met and above in ELA. You can see that Busby did close that. And then Busby also had a 6.6 more student score met and above, and they closed their gap toward the state average. In middle school math, you can see that we did a little bit better here. Busby, Pine Ridge, and Fulmer all made slight gains over the previous year, and you can see that none of the middle schools have caught up with pre-pandemic math scores. We're getting close in some areas, but across the nation, math is the one, the subject area that took the biggest hit with COVID. So we haven't yet called up to where we were in 2019. In science, this was sixth grade in middle school. You can see that Busby, Pine Ridge, and Fulmer all had gains over their previous year, and you can see as far as closing the gap, that Fulmer is less than 1% below the state average. ELL proficiency growth in middle school, you can see that all of them made double-digit gains over the prior year, with Northside and Fulmer gaining more than the state. And Northside and Fulmer, of course, closed that gap toward the state average. High school, EOC, these are students who scored a C or better. This is a little bit more challenging, because we feel like that it should be last year's test scores. EOC is not scored that way or not reported that way. This is last year's senior with when they took English 1, for example, Algebra 1, for example, Biology and US History. So in other words, if they took English 1 in eighth grade or ninth grade, what's reflected in 2022 is when those, the students took it. These are not necessarily the scores from last year. But regardless, you can see the differences there, and you can see where we made gains was in US History at both Airport as well as BC. In high school, our ELL proficiency growth, you can see that we made progress at both of our schools. Students are moving toward reaching the proficiency in English, and then while the gap increased at both schools, more students met proficiency growth goals than we did back in 2019, which was pre-pandemic. Graduation rate, you can see what those are. Both of our schools are below the state average by a little bit, but both schools are above our pre-pandemic rates, which was 2019. So based off these scores, and when we started getting those this summer, these are the areas and different changes that we made going into this year. We've talked about these. We created the district skeleton plans, and so the difference this year is we've asked our grade-level teams, our teachers, to take those plans and turn them into working documents where they're recording the strategies and all of that that they're using. We have the proficiency skills that were developed in K2. We're working on 3 through 5 during cohorts this year. We also have the TACAF form that was put in place to help us do a better job of being able to identify exactly which kids are moving and which ones aren't, so we can look at them a little bit more student by student. And then also our MTSS frameworks. This is our second year of implementation with those, and so we're trying to be more consistent with those. And so I know y'all like to hear from administrators, and so I have three that we've asked to talk to you tonight. If they'll come forward, that's Stephanie Hucks, Angela Brown, and David Sims. While they're coming up, I also want to point out, I feel like I need to say this publicly, back in 2019, Casey Elementary, for those of you that were around, remember that they really took a beating in the media with their test scores, which I personally felt like was a little much. I wanted to point out that Casey moved up 12 points to below average this year, and that is a lot of hard work that was put in at that school and from the whole entire team. And so I wanted to publicly point that out, because that's huge. Congaree was another school that has struggled historically, and so they also moved up eight points. There are other highlights and principles that I could have asked to come up and talk to you tonight, but I looked at the growth when we were talking about all of this. Stephanie Hucks, they made, at Busby, they made growth in all of their areas last year, and she also did it while losing two teachers last school year and went without math, as well as science for part of the year. And so I felt like it was, they were good. We have large schools. Angela Brown was at a small school last year, but she's been at Wood before, so I just felt like this might be a good combination to give you a real good look and overview and to ask any questions that you might have. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to y'all to share what you did to get the growth last year.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Brooks. I am absolutely excited and honored to be a part of a school team, excuse me, that strives to work really hard toward the mission of our school, which is to create learning opportunities for our students to grow in their confidence through our diverse programs, and also believes that our students, all of our students, can learn. When you break down our mission statement, you'll find that it is a shared responsibility of all stakeholders when it comes to student achievement. Our growth last year is a result of hard work and dedication when times were not that easy, just like Dr. Brooks said. Our focus has been to build strong professional learning communities that includes all of our stakeholders in order to close that achievement gap. Our teachers participate in weekly collaborative meetings and also in other, with other content partners throughout the district at our other middle schools. They understand that collaboration is critical and that working alone does not benefit our students. They are supportive of each other, and when issues arise, they always go the extra mile to help our students. This includes not being fully staffed last year and this year. To have an impact on student achievement, intervention time is part of the daily schedule. Our teachers analyze data and base their small groups around essential skills that are lacking. Intervention time is intentional and utilized in a way that students move in and out based on their academic progress. Busby is fortunate to have two instructional coaches, Ms. Wilmot and Ms. Jefferson. Both ladies- Both ladies are very instrumental when it comes to working directly with the teachers and the students. Their guidance with instructional strategies and assistance with curriculum needs has ensured that our teachers are equipped with best practices in order to deliver instruction. Our work with Solution Tree the past two years has steered us in a direction that has helped us to fine tune our Tier 2 and Tier 3 instruction. Additional school, additional district PD and school-level PD, professional development continues to support our teachers and provides them with new ideas and ways to enhance student learning. As a national schools to watch, we are constantly evaluating what we do to improve student achievement. Additionally, this past spring, we earned our third recertification as an arts and basic curriculum school. And just last week, we were asked to be one of five excursion sites for the, in the Midlands for the Palmetto State Arts Education Conference, where we hosted a group of teachers from around the state to come in and view our arts programs. We value the non-traditional classroom, which includes attending Camp Leopold, where our students learn science, math, and most importantly, team building. We also updated our strategic plan to include a STEAM lab and media arts design. All of these factors play a very important role when it comes to student achievement. We truly believe that students have, when they have confidence in themselves, they will find success. And we will continue to expand upon our current practices while continuing to search for new and innovative ways to increase student achievement. Thank you.
Good evening. So I've had the opportunity for the last, well, seven and a half years to be in the Wood, Congaree area and have had some wonderful people to work with. They've, they've done the work. And I just get the opportunity to share with you tonight what good coaches and principals and working with Mr. Dickey, Mr. Fiersten, all the coaches that we've had. So I'm super excited to share the difference makers that we have at Congaree and Wood elementary schools. Top on the list is going to be the PLC process. Spending time together with teachers, discussing our practices and how they can be used to move students has been the root of it all. This collegial time has added value to instruction, as you've heard, both our Tier 1 and Tier 2. It's increased collaboration resulting in stronger and more engaging lessons and it's improved teachers' ability to fully implement the instruction expectations in an honest and transparent environment. Operating as a professional learning community has set the tone for administrators and teachers to be straightforward about where we are, where we want to be, and open to asking for help and support. The district, including the board, you guys have been gracious to provide the PD that we've needed to help move kids. Our Solution Tree partnership has been an agent of change, helping to clarify and simplify this work. We're currently working to tighten and improve our Tier 2, which is our small group time with students, providing specific learning targets to achieve this growth. Through the MTSS process, we have really had the structure and support to focus on the whole child. I say it all the time, if they're not here, if, there's no instruction that's going to happen. So we're working on attendance. The team that we spearheaded at Congaree to work on that attendance is, is just, it was unbelievable. So having them there has pushed us forward to be able to do more with our kids. To spend that time to determine, is it skill or will? That's one of my questions that we ask. Asking questions about behavior, we talked about attendance, and all of this has led to targeted goals resulting in student achievement. Mr. Dickey realized early on when we got to Congaree that the importance, that there was massive importance to us working with Wood because it's our sister school and we share students. So we also worked closely with the coaches and had conversations together, the schools' book studies together, while looking to restructure the master schedule to support interventions all in order to meet students where they are and move them forward. We've looked at ways to carve time and for grade levels to share students, which is a huge push to our interventions. This has allowed kids to build relationships with other adults in the building, which adds excitement for learning with different experiences. Sharing students has been an integral part in the growth process and in supporting teachers as they work smarter and not harder. Both schools have focused on goal setting for both adults and students in order to be clear and specific on what is to be taught and what has been learned. Specific feedback provided to the students has added fuel to the fire created through the achievement team process. Having a tool like the TACA, it's like a note catcher for the rich collaborative conversations that teachers have about students. It's helped us to stay focused on student achievement and not students as a whole or just in general, but as individuals. We name students as we discuss them. We support students through interventions and we celebrate each of those students' successes. Last year, Congaree, as an avid school, started a teacher-led strategy share time once a month. So the school shares a strategy and it's implemented throughout grade levels, related arts, all of it. And then we, I knew I was going to go off my script, so I got to find where I am. So each month, it's a high-yielding strategy that we implement. Then we come together to not only share evidence of student learning, but to have those conversations amongst teachers. So it's a vertical articulation. So we, first graders looking at fifth grade work, fifth graders, our, fifth grade teachers are reminded, if they can do that in first grade, I need to expect more. So that was, I call it bang for buck on that one. We, we come together, we share that evidence. We've implemented this at Wood this year, and our first share time at Wood is going to be this Monday, so I'm super excited about that. So this, this continuous process of teaching and learning, this is the basis for the growth that you saw on the screen. So what are our next steps? Well, we've spent most of our time in the area of reading. If you can't read, you're going to have problems everywhere. But looking at the report card data, we're going to take all that we've learned, keep it going, but then apply it to math this year so that next time we come to discuss our state report card, it's going to be even better. Thank you.
I never have a script, so here we go. Good evening, everyone. I do want to thank you on behalf of the Riverbank community. I'm honored to share with you our celebrations and accomplishments for the 21-22 school year and the work that went into making it possible. I'm going to start with a riddle for you. How does a bird learn to fly? By winging it. Ding ding. Now, that may be good for the birds. However, winging it does not work in our educational setting where we're focused on continuous school improvement. So last year, we started our journey to become an effective professional learning community. Now, I have the hard task of following two great speakers, so I'm going to be, give you a spoiler here and ask you to hear things that are repetitive because the things that you hear repeating at each school where the results were are things that are working. So you're going to hear some repetition. A PLC is an ongoing process in which educators work collaboratively in recurring cycles of collective inquiry and active research to achieve better results for the students. Our district has provided Riverbank with a wonderful coach, Nathaniel Provencio from Solution Tree. During our first year together, he has provided professional development to help strengthen us as a professional learning community. I've been around a long time and we've talked about a professional learning community for over a decade. There's a difference of talking about it and becoming one, and I'm learning that as we are at Riverbank. We are becoming the professional learning community. He helped us, he helped by observing our teams at work and he provided specific feedback for them, how to get better. We, he's worked closely with my leadership team to provide solutions, his experience, opportunities for our growth, and he's our cheerleader. He's assisted in our planning for our next steps as we grow and learn together. Our goal at Riverbank is to increase teacher efficacy. What is that? Teacher efficacy is a shared belief of teachers and their ability to positively affect student learning and achievement. In my school, I saw that after two years of COVID beatdown, bring back fun, passion, excitement and focus on learning. The PLC develops and instills a mentality of they're all our students and we work together to see continuous improvement and growth. It creates a culture where we share students, ideas, plans and feedback to get better results. We have honest conversations, Lord help us. Sometimes they're rough. I want to just slide under the table. Sometimes you get a phone call about our conversations, and that's okay because honest conversations produce good results and give you a better decision. Our coaches use the information. I have a reading coach, a math and science coach, and praise the Lord, this year, a MLL coach, multi-language learner, getting multiple feedbacks from the staff. How helpful that is to be able to go to someone and say, what do I do? So that has been good. We want everyone in our learning community to feel comfortable seeking reinforcement and refinement in their teaching and their learning. It's exciting and fulfilling, but not easy. Change is hard for all of us. That's when you get your phone calls. But if we're going to stay sharp and stay focused, we can't keep doing what we're doing if it's not getting the results that we want. Last year, we focused on setting goals. You've heard that multiple times. We did it as a school and a grade level, and we exceeded all. We started by, where are we? What's the reality at Riverbank? You got to look at your data. This is what we are. We said, where do we want to be? And that became our goal. Next question, how do we get there? That was our collaboration, working together and our professional development. And then we checked to see if what we were doing was working by using our data. We had a press-in model in K-5. Many of you came to see that. You know what we're talking about. If you don't, I'll be glad to share more. We shared kids throughout the building. We made groups. We combined. We continually discussed and shared our strategies and results. This year, we're going to continue with goal setting, but we're adding two different levels. We want it to drift down into the class and then eventually to the student, which is a research-based practice. Hattie's work shows if students set goals, they achieve more. So that's where we want it to be. We are developing protocols for priority learning. You saw up here in the strategies, essential standards, skeleton, skeleton plans. We're using all of those. All right? It keeps our focus on what kids need to have to be successful at the next level. Is it perfect? No. It is not. But it is better than what we had, which was a lot of people making a lot of different decisions. So it's given us continuity. Part of the process is saying, I don't want Dr. Brooks as my teacher. I could take any teacher because they're all good. That's where I want to be in a building of, of professional learning community. You've heard a lot about the TACA form this year. I'm actually excited about it for this reason. For the first time in my career as an instructional leader, it will provide historical data so we can go back and look next year, what did we try? What worked? What didn't work? We've never had that before on a team level. So I'm excited that we can look at that. I know it's created some stress and some anxiety, but we've been given the freedom and the encouragement to make it our own. And when you give teachers encouragement to do that, then they accomplish that task and make it work for them. It's not another thing at that point. It becomes a useful tool. So we appreciate that. This year, we're also clarifying and restructuring Tier 1, 2 and 3. You've heard that mentioned of our instruction. We're using the MTSS process to do that. We're using our feedback and our data and collaboration to restructure our reading intervention, which needs better results. We've had those meetings this week. I'm surprised you hadn't gotten a phone call about it. But you may. But we have changed the process. Why? Because our data shows the way we're currently doing it is not working. So we've come up with a system with everyone's input through the PLC process to see more students and to meet the needs of Riverbank. We're going to try it and see how it works, and then we're going to tweak it to make it better. That's what you do when you're learning as a professional learning community. He's not here tonight, but I'm reminded by a statement repeated many times from one of my many mentors. This one came from Mr. Bowlin. I know y'all worried about what it's going to be. But actually, it was a good one. Mr. Bowlin always taught me, be tough on the process and tender on the people. I've always kept that in mind. The PLC, that's the culture I want to create at Riverbank. We are tough on the process. If it's not working, why? What can we do to make it better? If someone's failing, a lot of times it's because of lack of clarity or communication or our process has broken down. So let's pinpoint what we need to do to fix that. The PLC process helps with that. So I want it to become a part of our fabric so that no matter who's at Riverbank, PLCs will survive because I believe in that. And that's why I think we're getting the results we're getting right now. Thank y'all. Questions? I don't have another riddle.
Very good. Well, the first one was great, but yeah. All right. Well, thank you all for being here and sharing all of that with us. That was super helpful to hear that. Dr. Brooks, did you have anything additional for us?
Sir, any questions, if you have any?
Anybody have any questions for Dr. Brooks?
I was just going to say, I'd love to see a TACA form, just to know what they keep up with and what follows our kids and how it changes as they get older. I guess it's like the, we're going to put it in your permanent record. Is that the same type thing that used to be? Or, I mean, I know it's much more involved, but.
Yeah. We'll be glad to.
Yep. All right. Anybody else? All right. So I know we. They obviously cover up. It's kind of green, right? But it's not. Turn it off so that it doesn't make that sound. So. Hello? Okay. Let's try that again. So, you know, we were talking about lots of things and the kind of thing, and I know that, you know, you have goals, Raffner has goals. We've, you know, principals and it's a lot of work that goes into, it's growing and learning and that kind of thing. So I know that anywhere that we need to see more growth, you all are working on that. But there were some areas of, you know, a lot of growth made in closing the gap towards the state average. And so, you know, anybody and everybody that. Do, to do that, I just want to, you know, congratulate all and just keep it up because it's pretty amazing, some of the things we saw there. So. All right. So that, so that's it for instruction. Thank you, Dr. Brooks. So we will move now to our operations update, and we're sad that Mr. Chapman's not here tonight, but we have Mr. McPherson here, and so he will do the operations update and then the update on Walterboro Street project. So welcome. Thanks for being here.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chapman sends his regards. He's dealing with a medical procedure with his father, so he's where he should be. In your board docs, we've uploaded all the, all the operations, all the operations updates. So if you guys have any questions, we have Ms. Angeliano, Dr. Hunter, Mr. Hauser and myself here to answer any questions.
Madam Chair. Just one quick question I meant to ask earlier, and I forgot, I think I sent it today, but the BCAA dance floor, I know that was talked about. Is that still on schedule for Christmas break or?
It is an approved project. We have the specifications out. Preliminary price came back. We need to bid it out. So we're in the process of working on getting it bid out. I don't know if we'll be able to do it over Christmas break or not.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Any other questions?
Yes. Are you considering other furniture for the new facility other than the furniture that's at District Office? That was mentioned last, at the last meeting.
I will have to defer to Mr. Chapman about that.
Well, I've got several other questions. I think I'll just call him later on because I don't, I don't want to put you on the spot. But I hope we're considering some other furniture for that, but I will ask him about it.
Okay. He's, he's looked at different tiers of furniture, so I don't know if it's different furniture completely.
Yes, those were just samples.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Kessler. Any other questions? So if not. If not, we'll move to Walterboro.
Alright, so, um, it went away. There was there? There we go. So, um, we have some questions about Walterboro Street, so I just kinda wanted to go through. I'm not exactly sure, we're gonna kinda do a broad overview of it. We're gonna start with history. 1819, Fulmer was demolished, half of it, and rebuilt and everything. 2020, Lexington 2 looks to take ownership of Walterboro due to the, um, damage on the streets. DOT really didn't wanna take care of it, I guess. So the project, um, was designed and then shelved because we did not have funds for it in the capital campaign. Now, 2021, ESER funds became available to the district, and also in 2021, we did a CPI project for the replacement of a roof at the Community Education Center. That plays in here, I'll tie it in a minute. So in 2021, the roof quality, um, roofs qualify for ESER funds, so I kept hearing some rumors about that, called some other consultants and other school districts, and we're able to pay for roofs replacement with ESER funds because of air quality issues, just leaking, it's mold, it's, it's dangerous, so. Um, I went to Dr. Wade and kinda said, hey, look, we can help pay for Wa, um, Walterboro by swapping these projects. So we took the project, the CEC, off the CPIF, and then swapped it out with some funds for ESER. That was a good deal for the Community Education Center because we were actually able to do more roof. We spent about $720,000 over there. Um, in 2020, we completed the roof, and then we kinda refocused on the Walterboro project. So that's kinda where we stand. Um, this is an overview and kinda get you where we are. There's Boston Avenue, this is the new part of Fulmer, and the back part that was, um, renovated. Wrong way? There we go. Um, initially, back in 2020, this was the design, I think Don Eisenhower kinda said, hey, draw me up, repave into Walterboro. So the parts that are in dark, coming down here, Walterboro going up, back up Eagle Drive, is what the initial design was. Once I dusted it off, I kinda looked at it and said, well, you know, is that what we wanna do, or are there better things to do? If you look down here, our property actually goes back all the way to Miami Street, so there's about 150 foot back here that was not covered in the paving, so if we go pave Walterboro and leave 150 foot full of potholes, you get calls, I get fussed at, so that's not a good thing. So I've asked the engineer to add that part in there. I also walked this back Eagle Drive, and this is fairly new pavement up there, and I think it has about 10 years of, of life still left in it, so we're not gonna redo that part right there, so. A drawing of that area shows where we've actually gone back and, you know, incorporated pavement in this, incorporated a little bit of pavement down Eagle Drive right here, where the little dip is, a lot of buses go in there, and we're not paving this part back up in there. Took another look at it, um, parking is a premium at Fulmer, it's, it's really tight, so I was kinda looking on there, while we're doing pavement, why not do a little bit of parking, cause that's, contains a lot of asphalt and concrete work. So I asked the engineers to go right in here and see if we could actually do some pavement, um, parking areas like that, and if you look on the sheet, we've added nine spaces we're gonna put in right there, so that's right in the middle of the school, um, those would be prime spots for Dr. Carr ever to sell or rent out to somebody. Um, we also looked at, this is the airport student parking lot, and we've done a lot of work in here. We poured all the islands in concrete, got rid of the old trees, the rocks, the mud, the weeds, put in a couple of, um, crepe myrtle trees down through there, we put new black vinyl fencing around it, we striped it, we seal-coated, so it really looks nice, but this area outside here is, is an eyesore, and it's been that way since I've been here. Um, what I wanna do is grab this little curb over here and bring that curb all the way across the front, and then put in a concrete little ditch, some grass, and what that's gonna do is gonna trap the water, we're gonna flow the water down, stick it in a, an outlet right here to help control that water versus letting it sheet off into Walterboro like that. It'll also dress that whole area up right there and look really nice, so. We stand, and that kinda shows what we're gonna do right in this area here. So basically, what's the status? Well, we're waiting on Department of Transportation, Lexington County. Both of them, unfortunately, um, the guys after me can talk about that, th- they're slow in getting processed, slow in getting approval. They've asked a lot of questions, we've responded back with our engineers, um, and so that's kinda where we are with that, so. If that answers y'all's question, if you have any questions or comments, we'd love to entertain them.
Alright, any questions? Thank you for that, Nate.
Okay. Thank you guys very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. McPherson. Before we move on, Madam Chair, if I may, um, Mr. Crocker got so excited by the questions during his section, he forgot the very last point that I think you all will want to hear, so, Mr. Crocker, I'll let you share.
Thank you, Dr. Hafner. Um, also, last night, uh, we received, um, a notification from GFOA that we got our second Certificate of Excellence in financial reporting for the 21th, um, annual report, so just wanted to pass that along.
And you forgot that?
Yeah. I'm glad we circled back. That's great news.
That was out loud in my report.
Yes, thank you. That's, that's amazing. Alright, so now we will move to unfinished business, and we will start with Item A, which is consideration of revisions to Board Policy BEA.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair. I would ask that you and members of the board consider revisions to Board Policy GBEA as presented, with the proposed change in the addition of the paragraph, "To promote transparency in the hiring process, the board requires each trustee to execute an affidavit attesting that he or she has not exerted any influence when a member of that trustee's immediate family is seeking to be hired or promoted within the district. These affidavits, as well as a noted, as a notice of recusal, are included as exhibits to this policy and will be maintained with the minutes of the board meetings." And I did just verbally add, "as well as notice of recusal."
Okay. Very good. I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we, um, approve the change as recommended, along with the added language that the superintendent just told us about.
Alright, we have a motion by Ms. Branham. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Wooton. Any discussions?
Yes, ma'am. I think this is a good first start, but I do think that we should look to be, um, at least comparable, if not stronger, in the world nepotism, not to current sets, but so that we, as we move forward, um, so I, while this is a step forward, I would like that we continue as we look through Sections B over the next year, if we get into that, that we truly look to see solidify our nepotism policy to be very strong. Um, and again, that's not for any current spots, but as people come and we move on to this, that we set that up for success.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Bray. Any other discussions? Alright, if there's no further discussion, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carried. Alright, and then our next item is Item B, which is considerations of Items 1A and 1B on the owner's add-alternance list for the PAC DEC.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair. As you all will recall, we had a board workshop on October the 6th to discuss items of consideration from our owner add-on list for the Performing Arts Center, District Education Center. In that meeting, we had representatives from Jumper Carter Sees, Thompson Turner Construction, and the consultant involved in the Performing Arts Project, Jason Pritchard. Based on where we are in the construction process, we have before us this evening a decision to make regarding Items 1A and 1B on this list. Option Item 1A consists of 15 additional motorized hoists to the estimated cost of $734,295.15. And Option Item 1B consists of 23 additional manual rigging costs, rigging hoist to the cost of $449,942.01. I will say that over the course of the last few months and weeks, we have met with the team at Jumper Carter Sees, Thompson Turner Construction, and the consultant for the theater, Mr. Pritchard that I mentioned, a number of times. In addition, we had a meeting with an individual who runs a very successful performing arts center in North Carolina that is similar to the size that we are building, in order to gather authentic feedback about the needs for the operation. And most importantly, we met with the team of our fine arts teachers here in Lexington 2, and there was a great deal of discussion regarding how beneficial the hands-on experience would be for the students of our district with the manual riggings and preparing them for the real-life experiences in the performing arts industry. The overwhelming suggestion and recommendation from them and this administration is that you all support Item 1B, which is the addition of the 23 additional manual rigging hoist.
Alright, thank you, Dr. Hafner. I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I may, I move that we accept or move 1B on the owner's add-alternance list to our, whatever the verbiage is for that. I accept that we move, that we put 1B into our add-alternate.
Alright, we have a motion by Mr. Bray. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Wooton. Um, any discussions? None? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Your keys all noted. Thank you. Um, okay. So, that takes us to Item C, which is revisit staffing solution contract. Dr. Hafner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The board initially visited this item in August, and at that time, did not feel we were quite in a predicament that we are now with our vacancies. We have looked continuously to fill these vacancies, we've sent letters to all the retirees from the last two years, and called upon individuals that we felt might be interested in making a return to our workforce. While we all know that the hiring of a certified individual who can join our Lexington 2 force and physically be in the classroom with our children is the ultimate goal, we are now nine weeks in with the same predicament before us. There are a multitude of companies that offer services that can fulfill the gap we currently have of the certified teacher, and to be clear, this is not a virtual school or ongoing e-learning situation. Students get on the bus, they come to school, they report to the same classroom with the same substitute or aide that they currently have. Should we pursue the services of some of these companies, the difference would be that the students would be receiving instruction from a certified teacher, either synchronous or asynchronous, depending upon what options are still available, given this time of the school year. If you recall, the cost of the substitute or classroom assistant is already in place, they're already there. The additional cost of a contracted service is roughly $75,000 compared to one of our own classroom teachers with 12 years' experience and a master's at $58,800, but when you add in the benefits, it's about $82,400. So the contracted service is cheaper than the cost of the initial, whoops, hold on, I just lost my, the cost of the... Okay. Classroom teachers with 12-year experience and a master's at $58,800, plus benefits, it's about $82,400, so the contracted service is cheaper than the cost of a typical certified employee position. It is when you add in the substitute cost, who's already in place, that makes the investment more expensive by roughly $10,000. Given the number of our current vacancies, this cost would be well within the budget for our allotted positions, especially if we only look to fill the most critical areas of our vacancies. I assure you that we would continue to look to fill these vacancies for the remainder of the year and place any available hires as soon as possible, and redirect any remaining contract obligations, if there are any, to other classrooms in need. Now, as I've shared, um, a multitude of services, and I didn't say exactly which companies, because we may now return to some of these services presented or other companies that have come before us, and to human resources, and they may no longer have teachers available for those spots. So it's just a matter of checking availability to see if we may possibly be able to retain a handful of critical positions to give that some opportunity moving forward in the next few weeks, and then, of course, in December, we'll be looking, hopefully, at some new hires and fulfilling those vacancies. So I'm asking for a consideration of that.
Alright, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we accept administration's recommendation to, um, employ or revisit the staffing solution contract.
Alright, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Summers. Any discussions? Ms. Wooton? And then Ms. Kessler.
I realize we're to a point that we now have to do what's best for our kids, our students, our schools. I don't want this to be a quick fix. I don't want this to be something that we rely on in the future. We have to do better, and we can't listen to, we've got a plan, we've got a thought, we think we can do this. We have to do something now. And we have to do, I'm gonna reiterate on what Mr. Bray said twice tonight, we have to figure out how to keep our first-year teachers, get them, I know that we have a district mentor coach, if we have to bring them in on Saturdays to get them where they need to be with their, uh, alternative certifications or passing their test, that's what we need to do. And then we also have to figure out how to retain all of our seasoned teachers. This, I'm gonna support it, because we have to do what's best for our kids, but we've got to change, and we've got to do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wooton. Ms. Kessler?
I, ditto to what Ms. Wooton has just said. I know that we're gonna have to make a move, but my fear is that we put something like this in and we never take it out. So I would be willing to vote with, but I would like for it, the recommendation to be amended to this year only, until we see how next year comes about.
I accept the friendly amendment, if Mr. Summers will accept it as well for the second.
Okay. Thank you. Alright, thank you. Anyone else?
I do have another comment. But when we have teachers that have been waiting for six years to get in a classroom because they've been involved with Teachers of Tomorrow or Teach for America, we do not need to lose those teachers to another district, and we are. So, if we've got others that are in those programs and have been waiting for a classroom, we need to pull them in, have a serious discussion with them, and see how soon we can get them in a classroom, cause I'd much rather have those people than somebody on the screen for $75,000 a year, knowing that we're also paying a substitute, and I would, I assume that that employee would have benefits if it's a year-long, uh, contract. So this is a very expensive way to do it, and I want us to be more cognizant of the people that we're working with and get them involved, pull them in, do what we need to do with them. Don't lose them to another district.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Kessler. Ms. Castles?
I, I agree with what everybody has said. I, I don't want to get to where this is the norm, because relationships are key and preserve the integrity of the traditional classroom, but I, as I said, a month ago, I, I do feel like we're in a crisis, and it can't be in a month, we have got to, yes, we need to recruit, but we have got to retain, because we have people that are ready right now to take our teachers and put them to work. So, I, I really think we need to focus on that, and that is right now. And again, I love all the things that I heard with these principals over here, and just, again, listening to some of our teachers, and not just, you know, Teacher of the Year, because they're so busy with their task after that, but hearing them and really listening about some things that are what we can do to meet them and make it better, so.
Noted, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Castles. Mr. Bray?
Uh, one, one quick thing. I'm concerned that this in the, and I'm glad that y'all made the amendment to just this year, but across the education sphere, I'm concerned this is gonna end up being very similar to what the nursing field went through for a long time, of creating this, like, kind of pseudo-environment out there where we lose regular teachers to go teach at this contract company that pays it a significant price, or you get to sit at your house and teach from a screen, because if I understand it right, what's ultimately gonna happen is the substitute will be in the room, and then we're gonna pipe in a teacher, right? So basically, we're paying somebody for their scalability, because they can have one teacher who can go teach a class here, and Sumter for the first block, and then BC for the second block, and Airport for the third block, right? That's the concept, correct?
It, it runs a little differently with each of the companies.
So, that's just my concern, um, that as we move into next year, and again, this motion's just for this year, but it, that we look ahead of that, way ahead of time, and the reason I say this, we can't stop what's gonna happen outside of the district, but what we can do is have that same concept, if we truly feel that it's gonna be a crisis and we can't differentiate from other districts and not have a vacancy issue, then let's look at potentially pulling certain teachers out and doing that same model and concept within our own district. It's something that is very feasible, we have the technology, we've already done there, we've been there, and then if other districts can start to follow a bit of an innovative process like that, we can stay away from the traveling nurse concept that is slowly recirculating back around to common sense, so.
Good idea. But I will also say, I, I think part of teaching is the relationship with the kids, and I think most true teachers would, will want, and I'm not knocking virtual teachers because they're amazing and I can't imagine what they have to do, but I, I think they really want to have that relationship with their students and be with them and grow with them, so I think we can put the responsibility on us to... So, I think we can put the responsibility on us to do what we need to do once again to listen and take care of our teachers.
And I think, I feel like we're out of options. I've, I've heard that. I know when you made the presentation, Dr. Cooper, uh, a while back. So, and I appreciate getting out of the box and seeing what the options are. And before we got, we're close to the jumping off point. I think I, I know I'd asked you previously, but where are we now? How many vacancies do we have? Fifteen, sixteen?
I believe that it's seventeen, seventeen regular education.
And so, what, what is a number? Do you have a target number instead of filling seventeen? And we're gonna like pile it a half a dozen, five or six?
Yes, sir. Yes, if we could do that, that'd be great.
Thank you, Mr. Summers. Bran?
And my concern, um, obviously appreciate the friendly amendment, Ms. Castle, because I do believe it needs to be one-year and watched closely. My main concern as well, um, Dr. Hafner and of course, Dr. Cooper, is that we really, and I'm sure Dr. Brooks would agree with this as well, to pull you in it as well, we really need to be mindful of the areas in schools in which we're using the, this method as opposed to, uh, body in the room because I don't want to see this become something that's only used in, in certain schools. I want all of our kids to have the opportunities that every kid has to have a real warm-bodied teacher in the room. Um, you know, I, I think I had, I had a sweatshirt that I loved from my days at School of Education at Boston University. And the back of that sweatshirt said, "Think for a moment about the person who inspired you the most." And it said, "Chances are, one of them was a teacher." And, you know, it's, it's the greeting a child when they walk in a room. And granted, our teachers out there are phenomenal, and they had to do virtual for a certain period of time with COVID. But, you know, I think most people would have agreed that wasn't the ideal because you're missing that, you know, looking them in the eyes, smiling at them, all of this kind of thing. If you're on a screen, it's a little bit harder. I just want to be really careful about the schools in which we're using these. And that like, for instance, if we have five that go in schools this year and we find the need next year, that perhaps schools that didn't have it this year, maybe they would get it for that year. And the school that had to use it this year would maybe get an active candidate. You know, maybe they're the first ones who get the interviewer sent to them, you know, things like that. That's just looking down the road.
Absolutely. Can keep that in mind.
All right, and the only thing that I was kind of thinking about as everyone else was sharing is maybe we could get an update at each monthly meeting on the number that we're using so that each month we can see if it's trending up or down. Because that'll make a big difference in how we're kind of thinking we're gonna possibly start the year next year too. So, if we're trending down, that's gonna be good news, so. All right, any other questions, comments? All right, so, um, if there's no further discussion, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carry. All right, so, thank you, Dr. Cooper. And, um, that finishes new business, so we will now, um, excuse me, that finishes unfinished business, so we will move to new business. First item is administrat, administrative recommendation for expulsion extension program. Dr. Hafner.
Madam Chair, thank you. And I know that Dr. Brooks placed a hard copy before you, but I'm gonna go through it nonetheless. Uh, our district has implemented an expulsion extension in the past, and I would like to reinstate that program with some modifications. Uh, when students are expelled from our district, all ties are currently severed until the expulsion period has passed. And during that time, students fall behind academically, but they also lose a sense of belonging in our district, which can result in larger challenges for them in their personal lives and when they return to our, um, and when they return to our schools. The expulsion extension program would provide an educational opportunity for middle and high school students who otherwise would be considered for expulsion. These are students who are unable or considered to not be good candidates for the in-person alternative program. This program would be for those students who haven't been successful within our alternative school or have an, have an offense, have an offense, excuse me, that would keep them from being in our buildings. This would offer a chance for these students to still earn credits through one of our state-approved proficiency-based educational programs. So, when you think about the students that are eligible for this, that would be students that should be passing a majority of their classes and have no discipline violations that would preclude them from having a district device at home. The initial logistics and intake interview would be conducted by the administration of New Bridge Academy. An invitation to be included in this extension program will be based on the information received in the intake interview as well as consideration of discipline, attendance, and academic records. At that time, eligible students would be provided with the requirements and expectations of the program. If accepted into the program, the student would understand that any disciplinary or academic integrity violations or prolonged inactivity in coursework would call for immediate dismissal from the, from this opportunity. The instructors, the, the program would utilize Lexington District II certified instructor, instructors. Ideally, teachers from New Bridge Academy would serve as teachers of record for students who are already served in the alternative program. The district would look to hire teachers in the four core content areas for middle school and high school students who are not served in the alternative program. Additional areas of certification would be considered at the discretion of the superintendent as needed based on courses required for promotion and/or graduation. And the academic program for those students who qualify, they would continue to be enrolled as a Lexington II student and be provided the opportunity to earn the credit for their current classes provided the courses are available through our proficiency-based education programs approved through the State Department of Education. The priority for courses would be those classes required for graduation and/or promotion to the next grade level. And attendance would be based weekly on the student meeting the goals established within the program that would allow the student to complete the required activities and assignments by the end of the graded period. And suggested timeline for implementation would be, we're proposing a trial period for the second semester of this school year to begin January 2023 and run through May 2023. And if successful and additional funding is available, the year-long program could be implemented for the '23, '24 school year. So, I present this to you for your consideration.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we accept administration's recommendation to begin the Lexington II expulsion extension program for the spring semester.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Branham and a second by Mr. Bray. Any discussions? Ms. Castle?
Yes. And I don't want to sound crude about this, but I want to be very firm. One of the issues that I hear from our community and from our educators is that we have a problem with discipline. And as we ease this ruling in, I do not want to see it or hear about it being abused just because we want to save getting a hit on the report card. I would much rather take a hit on the report card than taking a hit in the classroom by not observing discipline procedures.
And these are students who would not be in the classroom at all. They would be totally not connected.
And I understand that, but I also understand we're making provisions, provisions for those to get an education. And I know how they sort of creep back in and other discipline issues happen. I just want to make sure that it's in statement that I do not want just to have this program just for the sake of saving the report card.
Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Castle. Mr. Bray?
So, the, what I don't understand, if I'm a student at a middle school or high school and I do a zero, I am caught with a zero tolerance issue that would make me be expelled, do I automatically go to New Bridge and then get, uh, my eligibility check? Does that happen right away? Is that the process?
Uh, obviously, if there are cat ones that are criminal in nature or the highest offenses, this would not be a consideration for those students. This would be, um, a small group of students. It might be a student who's at New Bridge and violates a part of their probation. It can no longer be a student in that building. It wouldn't be appropriate. So, this would be a last opportunity for them to still stay connected academically with supports and not, um, totally sever their tires, their ties with our district. I feel like sometimes the more we sever that tie and they're left to their own means for a certain amount of time, we really stand the chances of losing them more and more and them falling behind further when they come back to us. With, with, for some of our students to be able to still maintain some academic progress and some supports of people checking on them and checking in on them, that when they come back to us, it won't be as far of a climb for them to get back to the normal structure and of the system.
So, it's four New Bridge students in middle school and high school?
And there may be some that go to a hearing with Dr. Hunter or Mr. Firestone or Mr. Chapman that this is, this is a program that would work best for them if New Bridge is not the right placement.
How many, how many students would we have up to this point in school we're in, uh, just through the first grading? How many students would have applied or been, been applicable for this program up to this point in the school year? Yes, sir. So, that would have been eighteen?
Nineteen.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, any other discussions? Okay, if there's no further discussion, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carry. All right, so we'll go to item B, which is consideration of first reading, uh, proposed revisions to the following board policies. Board policy BK, board policy BJ, board policy BIA, B slash BIB, and board policy BDB. Dr. Hafner.
Make a motion that we approve the recommendations, um, to get these policies in line with what we're currently doing and with what is currently in existence.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Branham and a second by Mr. Bray. Any discussions? I just wanted to add just one comment to, to this. Um, I do like that we, you know, um, made a few of them current. And also that, you know, with policy, I believe it's BDB, it states the superintendent in cooperation with the board officers, officers will prepare the agenda for the regular meetings, which is good to be consistent there because now they reflect each other. Um, but I, just something to think about for the future that might be helpful to the board. It, it would be helpful to me, but it, um, might be helpful to other members as well, is to possibly state how an agenda item gets on, um, the agenda. And I noticed that there was, um, a policy that states, um, a different policy from another school district. Says upon written request of three board members to the chairman, which could be the officers, um, that the agenda item will be placed on the neg, um, the next regularly scheduled meeting agenda. So, just something to think about for the future that might help this board kind of, you know, know the process to, to get something on the agenda since we do do the officers. It's just a little bit different. I like it. I like what we do. It was just, just a thought, so not changing the motion or anything like that, just a, a thought for the future. But does anyone have any other, uh, discussions on these?
I, I agree that making it more transparent on how something gets on the agenda would be extremely important. Um, and then, Dr. Hafner, as we mentioned earlier today, as we, most of these policies have been in the B category, I would love, I think it was Berkeley or whatever district that took fifty different policies that say a lot of the same thing and a very redundant and outdated process. If we look at theirs and maybe a few others, and instead of just trying to update what we have, maybe we look at someone else who's already done it and simplify it, make it a, a bit more efficient and effective, hopefully. So, if you'll just look at that when you, we get into the policy section. Thank you.
All right, any other discussions? All right, if there's no further discussion, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carry. Okay, that's item B. So, we will go to item C, which is consideration for the out-of-state or overnight student travel. Um, and those are listed on the agenda as well as board docs. I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve all out-of-state and overnight student travel as shown in the agenda.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Bray. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Wooten. Any discussions? None? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carry. And then, our last item for new, new business is item D, legal recommendation. Dr. Hafner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had the good fortune to accompany several board members at the School Boards Association Law Conference at the end of August. And one of the recommendations that came out of that conference was that districts allow themselves to have a cadre of attorneys to call upon when faced with specialized areas of legal advice. We have been very pleased with our relationships with Moore, Bradley, Myers, Parker Poe, and Whiten Story, and would like to continue those relationships. I am asking for a motion to add the law firm of Halligan, Mahoney &amp; Williams to provide legal services to the board and district on an as-needed basis. This would not be in lieu of the firms with whom we already have acquaintances, but in addition to as needed.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that we accept, um, and approve the administration's request and recommendation to add an additional firm to our, um, already well-qualified groups that we currently use.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Branham. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Wooten. Any discussions?
Madam Chair. I would, uh, Dr. Hafner, I would prefer that, starting maybe on our annual meeting, which is November, or some set time that we kind of go towards our procurement code concept of having the entire list of attorneys brought to us by you and your staff and then have that vote. I, I will be voting for this one to add the new one, but as I've been here for almost two years now, I have yet to vote on council at all. And so, I think that's something that we need to make a, a process that we're doing yearly.
Noted.
All right, anyone else? Any other discussions? All right, if there's no further discussion, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carry. All right, that concludes new business. So, um, I'm gonna go ahead and do our announcements before executive session. So, um, November 8th is Election Day, and so that's a holiday. And then, we have on November 15th, the reception for outgoing and newly elected members of the Board of Trustees, which will be at the District Education Center. And then, on November 15th, we have a special board meeting for swearing-in of newly elected members of the Board of Trustees and election of officers, which will, like I said, be on November 15th at District Education Center. And we have November 17th, the reception and recognition District Teachers of the Year, which will be here at the Innovation Center. And then, on November 17th, we will, same night, we will have our board meeting at 6:30. And then, November 21st through the 25th is our Thanksgiving holiday. So, I feel like we just welcomed you all back, and now we're talking about Thanksgiving. Um, so, that's our announcements. Um, so I believe Ms. Branham has the motion.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chairman. I make a motion that the Board of Trustees enter closed session for the following: consideration of personnel appointments and resignations and consideration of two student expulsion appeals.
All right, so we have a motion. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Wooten. Without objection, we will move to executive session. All for being out here tonight and be safe going home. Thank you. Second by Ms. Wooton. Without objection, we will move to executive session. Thank you all for being out here tonight and be safe going home. Thank you.
All right, the doors are now open. Is there a motion?
Madam Chairman, I make a motion-
Shouldn't the meeting be reconvened in an open session and the appropriate affidavit be executed?
We have a motion and a second. Without objection, we are back in open session. No votes were taken during executive session. Are there any motions to put forth before the board as a result of discussions from executive session?
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the appointments and resignations as recommended by administration.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Brannan. We have a second by Ms. Wooton. Any discussions? Being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carry.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we report employees two and three for breach to the State Department.
We have a motion by Ms. Brannan and a second by Ms. Wooton. Any discussions? Being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carry.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we uphold administration's recommendations regarding the two student expulsions.
We have a motion by Ms. Brannan and a second by Mr. Bray. Any discussions? Being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carry. All right, so we went ahead and did our announcement before tonight, so just kind of wanted to mention that this is Mr. Bud Summers' regular monthly meeting. It has been an honor to serve with you and thank you for your service to Lexington too. And if you miss us too much, you can run again in two years.
Madam Chairman, I think we owe it to Mr. Summers to let him make the next motion.
Motion to adjourn. Very good. We have a motion and a second. Without objection, this meeting is now adjourned. That was perfect. Thank you everyone.